Mr. Taylor, I do have six o'clock, but I would note that the commission does not yet have a quorum.
I, yes ma'am, I just sent Mr. Bedell a text message.
Okay, so you want to wait a couple minutes?
Please, please. Was there a reminder today?
I didn't see one.
Okay, we, okay, I think we do now if you want to begin.
Alrighty. Okay, I'd like to bring this up. Planning Commission Executive Meeting dated May 5th here at 6:00 PM to order. Can we take role, please?
Mr. Taylor?
Here.
Ms. Hart?
Yeah.
Mr. Fagan?
Here.
Ms. Williams?
Here.
Ms. Hancock?
Here.
Mr. Chair, you have a quorum and I will announce if when Mr. Bedell joins.
Okay. Has everybody had a chance to read the minutes of the nominating committee of the 27th, February 27th, and the executive session March 10th, as well as the executive meeting on April 7th?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Okay, if we have, could I have a motion for approval of the minutes?
Motion to approve the minutes?
Is there a second? There's a second. If that's signified, all those in favor signify by saying aye for approval. Aye?
Aye.
Nays? Ayes have it and the minutes are approved. Let's move on to new business and we have PC 09-25 Animal Protective Association of Missouri.
Alright commissioners, in front of you, you have PC 0925 for the Animal Protective Association of Missouri. This request is to a change in zoning from an R4 to a C8 and an amended C8 with the proposed use of an animal shelter, animal hospital, and accessory, accessory, accessory uses on a 4.77 acre tract southwest of the intersection of Benham Road and Redmond Road. As you can see on your left, this site is up in North County, north of 270, and on the right you have the two parcels outlined in red. This is just a larger context map showing the parcel outlined in red. The request is for a change in zoning from R4 to C8 and amended C8. In addition, they are proposing an addition to the existing building for a animal adoption center and accessory uses and a new building to be constructed for the animal hospital and other accessory uses. The use of an animal hospital and animal shelter are not permitted in the R4 and the current C8 only permits automobile sales and vehicle service. The preliminary site development plan shows the existing building outlined in green with the addition showed in gray on either side. The proposed new building on the back part of the parcel would hold the animal hospital and accessory uses with the attached outdoor dog park, not for public use, only for use of the animals in the shelter. The existing creek bed and vegetated area are in a 25-foot no disturb buffer zone on the left side of the parcel. And there is no proposed vehicular access on Redmond Road. There's proposed closing of the curb cut and you'll see that squared out in red at the top. Planning staff recommends approval. We find the proposed use is appropriate for the surrounding fellow commercial use and the C8 zoning is appropriate for the site, given the unique considerations and multipurpose use of the site. There is a demonstrated lack of shelters and animal hospitals in the area and would definitely fill a need in the community. And additionally, the creek on the whole left side of the property provides a buffer from the commercial uses of the site to the single-family properties to the west.
Okay.
The...
Go ahead, Suzanne, I'm sorry.
You're fine. The two site, site plan revisions are the building shall be made of a high-quality material as approved on architectural elevations. And due to the closing of the vehicular access on Redmond Road, we are requesting that they put a bus pad and bench to accommodate the bus stop that already exists on Redmond with a pedestrian accessway to the bus stop. And at this time, I would like to request a motion.
You've heard the recommendation of the staff for approval?
I'd like to make a motion to accept the staff recommendation for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. That being said, do we have any questions?
Yes.
Yes, go ahead, everyone.
So, I'm just clarifying that today we're only hearing a petition and a recommended staff recommendation for changing the zoning use, right? For not accepting the site plan.
So because they've requested the C8 planned commercial district procedure, the they, the site plan is, is married to the request. The, the concept of the site plan in front of the commission is, is part of the request.
The concept, so is there going to be a separate site plan review in the future?
So, good, that's a good question. So when the commission makes a recommendation on a C8 and forwards that recommendation to the council, if the council passes a C8 ordinance, they are approving the site development plan as a concept, but then the conditions of development are then what staff uses during a full, formal review of the site development plan. So then, let's, you know, let's say this were approved, the ordinance is adopted, they come back in a couple months and they submit this plan and we review it for compliance with the C8 ordinance.
But it's only the staff that's getting involved with that site plan and it no longer comes to the planning commission, is that correct?
We then bring it back to the planning commission when we find that it meets all of the ordinance recommendation, or excuse me, the ordinance requirements for the commission's final approval. We essentially don't bring a site plan to the commission unless we find that it meets all of those conditions of development, but it is ultimately the planning commission that approves that plan after staff does a review.
So I'm asking these questions and let me inform the planning commissioners as well. I'm asking these questions because it is, it was my recommendation as a planning commissioner, I'm very familiar with this site and this location, that access be provided from Redmond Road. And right now, the site is not providing access from Redmond Road. So knowing that Benham Road is a, a much more heavily traveled road, number one, and number two, it's a one-way only. So when the visitors to the site are exiting from the site, they have to make a right turn. And if they wanted to go in the other direction, which I guess is, let me look at this map here.
They wanted to go north.
Direction, right, they, they have to go up, kind of make a U-turn under the expressway and then come back down. So that, that is something that I believe MoDOT did in St. Louis County some years ago, made these roads one-way, outer roads. They used to be two directions on both sides of the, of the expressway, but now it isn't. So I did see that the planning staff outlined in red where the existing curb cut is on Benham Road. And it looks like, tell me what the recommendation is, build a bus pad and a bench to connect pedestrians. So, this would be like school buses visiting, and would it just be big enough for one bus, or what are we talking about here?
Metro has a bus that goes down Redmond Avenue in this area, so it would be a bus pad constructed in conjunction with Metro by state to suit their needs for the, for the, for the metro bus.
Regular, a public bus stop. It's just going to be the sidewalk. It's not going to be a place where a bus can...
No, it's not like a pullover. Uh, uh, no, it would, it would just be where the bus, where the bus stops today, providing seating and a more formal paved area there for folk who are waiting for the bus.
So, and I will also say that Redmond Road has a pretty wide left turn length center lane, left turn lane. It goes the entire length of the road. So tho- those are my concerns, that there's only one way, well, two entrances onto the site on Benham Road, but none from Redmond Road and we're, we're potentially approving reduced parking because they have these big buildings there. So we're reducing parking and parking may or may not be enough. This is the staff recommendation to allow the reduced parking. I believe it was a 20% reduction?
Yes, it's correct.
Okay. And I'm just looking at traffic because I know, because I live up here and how this traffic flows on Benham Road.
I'm happy to give, sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off, some of my perspective on the...
Yeah, to put entrance onto the site from Redmond Road.
I'm happy to weigh in, but I want to let the commission, if other commissioners have thoughts on that topic to weigh in as well. And I, I meant to mention that Mr. Bedell has joined us.
Very good. I do have a, one question and and that, and that is, what, I'm not looking at it right now because we don't have it in front of us, but from before, the study from St. Louis County or, or the state, what did they say about the entrances?
So, Redmond is a, is a county road and so what they put in their conditions that they gave us, which are just responsive to the preliminary site development plan, it's just that access from Redmond would have to meet county standard. But I just noticed one thing that I want to clarify. What the petitioner actually requested is a 20% parking deferral, which means that they would build that parking, just not during phase one. So I see that we, we just have that wording wrong in the condition of development. It's not intended to be a reduction in parking, but because of the phasing that they've proposed, I believe it's the area in the rear between the, the new building and the detention basin that they've indicated they would defer construction until they are building that second building.
Okay, okay, yep, that's, that's a totally different thing.
I apologize, I didn't...
Yes, deferral versus reduction.
Right.
I, I want to say that the actual architect even said in the meeting, when they came and presented to us in a public hearing, she used the word. I want to say she used the word reduction as well.
The, the, it's hard to even say because it's so rarely used, but the deferral is not, we don't see it a lot. It's only really used when there's either a phased development or there's some sort of, maybe it's a reduced needs population and they kind of want to see how it goes before they, you know, make that, make that improvement as well. But in this case, it would be a deferral until they built that, that building, the second one.
And the second one is the one in the back that's closer to Redmond Road?
Correct.
Okay.
And then pertaining to the access on Redmond, what I would note is that the curb cut that's there now looks to be a resident, essentially a driveway curb cut. And the main issue is that it doesn't align with, I can't remember what the street across the way is, Los Ladera. County transportation requires curb cuts to be opposite each other. And if they were to, if they were to just place a curb cut opposite that one on this plan, they'd have to, they'd have to re-engineer a lot of the plan. They probably have to relocate this building. And I, we can certainly ask them, but I, I have to assume that the petitioner decided that they did not need that curb cut and it didn't align with, with what they determined they needed to do with the site. And, and staff is, we are happy with this configuration. We think that it, it also provides a continuous pedestrian experience along Redmond Road, especially with the bus stop improvements and then the other recommendation we've put in, which is to have a pedestrian connection so that you could come off of Redmond Avenue and walk into the site, whether you're a visitor or a staff member or a volunteer, what have you.
Okay, so I'm going to say I'm in support of the, the buildings and the plan and the concept and changing to C8, but when we get to our vote, I'll make my vote. But I'm saying this pre-vote.
Well, this is the vote for the recommendation, so.
Okay.
It will come back from us if, once it's approved.
Mm-hmm.
From, from the letter from approval from the county. All right, we have a first and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Nays?
Nay.
Okay, we have five ayes and one nay. Good. Okay, let's go on to our next new business, which is PC 10-25 Dennis Seick.
Good evening commissioners. So we have PC 10-25 Dennis Seick. It's a conditional use permit in the C2 shopping district, looking for apartment dwelling units. This is a .44 acre site on the west side of Lima Ferry Road, approximately 300 feet north of Butler Hill Road. So here, on the left, this is the location within South County. It's near the I-55 interstate shield symbol, so it may be hard to see it first. And then to the right, you have the site itself. This is a split zoned lot, so the rear of the lot is zoned for R2 while the front is zoned for C2. And the petition for tonight is only concerned with that front portion that I, that's been hatched in. Again, this is the same aerial before, zoomed out a little further for more context. So, as reasons for the conditional use permit request, they are looking to build apartment dwelling units in buildings primarily designated for commercial use. They are proposing an existing detached single-family residence to be modified with a second story and be split into two apartment units. And then they are also proposing a cafe to be constructed on the rear of the existing structure. This is allowed by right in the C2 and therefore is not in question for this request. So for the preliminary site development plan, you have two apartment units. This is the section in green at the front. The cafe with roll-up doors and outdoor seating is to the rear. It's in red here. There is outdoor space for the residential tenants as required. In the front of the building, fronting Lima Ferry Road, there will be 14 parking spaces provided, 12 for the cafe and then two for the residence, which is one per unit. And there is a single entrance to Lima Ferry Road. This is going to be expanded from the existing 12-foot wide residential driveway to a traditional 24-foot two-way commercial drive. So the planning staff does recommend approval for this. We find that the conditional use permit procedure is appropriate for the site, given the apartments are not allowed by right and is a secondary use of the site with the cafe as the proposed primary use. This is the correct way to go through with this. The proposed use we find is compatible with the surrounding commercial and residential developments. And it does meet the four prongs of the conditional use permit process, which we find here. It's, we think that it is not detrimental to the permitted uses. It's low intensity, given both the nature and scale, it's only two units. Visually compatible with its surroundings. It preserves the majority of the existing structure and we find the additions to be compatible. The conditions within the conditional use permit will ensure that the apartment units are developed in a compatible manner. And then we find lastly that the proposed use is not out of context in respect to its surroundings and it does introduce a new housing type to this portion of St. Louis County, which is desirable to serve the housing needs of county residents. So finally, for the recommended revisions to the site development plan, we do want that, we do wish for the outdoor screening area for the apartment tenants to have privacy screening. That's that section in red. And then we do request that a 10-foot buffer yard with plantings to be placed along the north parcel line. Again, that is in green and then they do not label any signs, but we do request that any freestanding business signs shall be monument in style if they do come to be. And at that point, I would like to request a motion. Thank you.
Okay, you've heard a recommendation of staff. Do I have a motion for approval?
I'm moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Are there any questions regards to this? It's PC here. I, I do have one question. Can we flip back to the, the first map? Which showed the back partial, parcel of the property? So there's, they are, they are splitting this property up, correct?
No, it already exists as a split parcel. So basically that rear section is just not usable for them, so. Yeah, it already exists.
I could interject. It's one parcel, but it has a zoning line down it. Is that correct, Abby?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's right.
I believe, did we say in the conditions that they should, they should do a lot split?
We did not.
Because essentially, the rear half is, because it's also, like, doesn't have any frontage. It's essentially used, it's, they're sort of be creating an unusable portion of the lot, but there would only be the R2 rights back there because that rear portion is what's already zoned R2. They would only be able to do R2 permitted uses.
No, I was confused by that. I thought somewhere in there it said that you recommended a lot split.
Let me go back and look.
I was going to ask about that. But now I understand this really is to say, hey, the current zoning allows for the coffee shop. It's the residential that we need the approval for, right?
Correct, yeah. So in, what, what we can tell and what you saw in the background is this area was R2, but then the frontage of Lima Ferry here was zoned C2 when the zoning ordinance was adopted. So why that meant that only the front of this parcel was C2, I don't know. You can kind of see it on the parcel to the north. That green line just beyond the parking lot is that zoning line. But they only requested a CUP in the C2 on the front portion.
Okay, so that, I'm assuming that, that would keep anybody from building any apartments?
Oh, yeah, that's correct. Well, correct. You would not be able to build apartments. I don't even know if it would really facilitate one single-family residence even.
Yes, it's not big. Okay, well, we've got a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Ayes have it. Thank you. And we don't have any... I have old business that's not ready for action. I won't even go through that. And then we have a old business letter for approval. PC 03 and 04-25 Jamie Santos.
Good evening, PC 03 and 04-25 Jaime Santos. Is a request for a change in zoning from the NU non-urban district to the R3 residence district, as well as a request for a planned environment unit procedure in the R3 residence district. The proposed use is single-family residences on a tract size of 4.23 acres, located on the east side of Fine Road, southeast of Telegraph Road. This is coming before the commission tonight as a letter of recommendation. As the commission may recall, this site is located in South County. And as you can see from the aerial photo on your right, outlined in red is the entirety of the parcel. Here's a larger aerial photo, again, that parcel outlined in red. So just a little recap, this is a request for a change in zoning from the NU non-urban district to the R3 residence district, as well as a planned environment unit procedure in the R3 residence district. The petitioner is proposing 14 single-family residences with lots ranging in size from 7,500 square feet to 12,553 square feet. At the April 7th Planning Commission Executive Meeting, staff was asked to look into when the acquisition of right-of-way would occur and what information is required for a street stub study. Staff did reach out to members of the Department of Transportation and Public Works and received the following information as these comments were in attachment C and provided by their department directly. So in regards to the street stub study, the staff from the Department of Transportation and Public Works noted that the street stub study is put into attachment C to confirm that adequate street access will be provided. In this particular case, it's ensuring that adequate street access would be provided to the property to the east. Staff from Department of Transportation Public Works noted that based on the current proposed plan, the street stub study would not be needed as it, the street stub appears to be at an acceptable location. And as long as it remains as shown, they won't need to do that report.
So if they hadn't clearly shown that their internal street was going to go all the way to that eastern property line, they would have had to do a formal streets, street stub study. But because their preliminary site development plan was clear enough to show that that access will be provided to that budding lot, the condition will stay in attachment C but won't actually be triggered for this development.
Thank you. And then for the site distance and acquisition of right-of-way, the site distance and acquisition of right-of-way is another standard comment that's put into site-specific ordinances, which allows the development to move forward. The Department of Transportation and Public Works staff noted that site distance and street configuration details will be solidified during permit review with the petitioner. They also noted that if minor changes are needed, because of the way the language is provided in this comment, there would not need to be an amendment made to the ordinance for the site. And then they also noted in their letter to staff that the Department of Transportation and Public Works would work with the developer and their engineer to discuss any concerns or how to move forward if any major changes were proposed during that permit review. So this would also stay in attachment C as this is just standard comments. And they have mechanisms through the Department of Transportation and Public Works to work with the petitioner if this case does arise. Can you go to the next? So staff is recommending approval. There have been no changes made to your letter of recommendation as you saw it at your last Planning Commission Executive Meeting in April. So at this time, I ask for a motion.
You've heard the staff's recommendation for approval. Do I have a motion for approval?
Motion to approve?
Is there a second? All those in favors, excuse me, are there any questions? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Nays? Ayes have it. Very good. And now we're going to move on to correspondence.
PC 20, oh, sorry Keith.
That's okay.
Got a little ahead of myself.
Go right ahead.
PC 20-96 Mullen-Hoff Building and Realty Co. Is coming before the commission tonight, requesting an amendment to C8 ordinance 18,046 as amended for a proposed use of a financial institution for a tract size of 1.36 acres, located on the northwest side of Lima Ferry Road, northeast of Hickory House Lane. This site is located in South County and the commission can see the site outlined in red on the aerial to your right. Again, here's a larger aerial of the site with the site outlined in red. So for a little background, PC 20-96 was a request for a change of zoning from the C8 planned commercial district to a C3 shopping district. The Planning Commission recommended an amended C8 ordinance to allow increased design control. The current ordinance permits a convenience store with gasoline pumps and all C2 shopping district uses permitted without a conditional use permit except advertising signs. The site was occupied by QuickTrip until the early 2020s and the request is for an amendment to several sections in association with a proposed redevelopment of the site as a financial institution. So this is the preliminary site development plan that was attached with the letter from the petitioner for the amendments tonight. They are requesting several amendments based on the site development plan that you can see on your right. So the first request tonight for this site is the removal of all references to convenience stores, gasoline pumps and/or service stations from the ordinance to accommodate the proposed financial institution. Staff is recommending denial of this request as the current C8 ordinance allows a convenience store with gasoline pumps and all permitted by right uses in the C2 shopping district. The proposed financial institution does fall into the range of C2 permitted uses and does not pre- and does not preclude the development from using the site as a financial institution. This is, so this would allow for in the future, if somebody wanted to come in way down the line and do a convenience store again, they would be able to by leaving it in the C8 ordinance. The second request is for amendments to the structure setbacks and parking setbacks to match the requirements of the C2 shopping district. Staff is recommending an approval with modification. The structure and parking setbacks in the original ordinance were specifically meant for the proposed convenience store. So staff is recommending revising the ordinance to reflect the preliminary site development design proposed. So we would be making amendments to the structure setbacks that you can see on this slide as well as the parking setbacks. The third request is relief from the traffic generation assessment, TGA contribution. Staff is recommending denial of this request. TGA is applied to all planned district procedures and is not removed from governing ordinances on a case-by-case basis. Staff from the Department of Planning did reach out to staff from the Department of Transportation and Public Works. And they did confirm that no additional TGA contribution will be required with this associated development. However, future developments may come into this site and may be required to pay TGA contribution. Thus, the TGA should not be removed from the ordinance. And the final request for this site is relief from the maximum parking space allowance, which limits a development to a maximum of 120% of the parking requirements allowed per the zoning ordinance. Staff is recommending denial of this request as Section 1003.165 Off-Street Parking and Loading Requirements of the St. Louis County Zoning Ordinance does provide a mechanism that allows for over-parking that can be reviewed in conjunction with formal site development plan review. Thus, there's no need to include an over-parking requirement in the site-specific ordinance. So at this time, staff is recommending partial approval. The proposed use is permitted by the current C8 ordinance. It is appropriate to consider different conditions of development associated with redevelopment. And the addition, I apologize, the additional recommendation, recommended requirements that we are putting into the ordinance would also be for the Planning Commission to review and approve architectural elevations on the new building prior to site plan approval. And then we also made amendments to the landscaping section to bring these requirements into compliance with the current zoning ordinance requirements. So at this time, I ask for a motion.
Okay, I'm gonna go through this motion, make sure I have it right. So I'd like to move with the staff, but we're gonna request a denial on Request 1 a denial, Request 2 an approval, Request 3 a denial, and Request 4 a denial.
Request 2 is an approval with modification.
Okay, with what you said at the end. That was recommendations right here. That being said, could I have a motion approval for those four requests?
So move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I'm sure there's some questions. Do we have any questions?
I have a question. You said it used to be a quick trip?
Yes, that's correct.
Are the pumps still there?
So the pumps, as far as I'm aware of the site currently in its current state, I believe they are now the new property owner whenever they go to, you know, tear the building down and stuff like that, they will have to take the appropriate measures to, with the EPA and other groups with the county to ensure that those pumps are removed.
So the pumps are gone, the tanks are there, Gretchen?
They very well could be. I'm not 100% sure on that, so I don't want to speak to that level.
The canopy's already gone, like you saw, Mr. Taylor. But as Gretchen said, the Department of Public Health, also their environmental group oversees a lot of those requirements as well.
Well, I was just thinking about future use. I know that that's important for, you know, for service stations is if the site is already equipped or would they have to go through some exhaustive process to get that going?
Oh, sorry, Mr. Vidal. Yeah, so like if another quick trip or another gas station entity ever wanted to come back on the site, that would be, you know, their own design work that they would have to do. Basically, though, what this would be doing is they could come back in per the C8 ordinance and use the site for the gas station convenience store. But as far as like if they would have to reinstall tanks and all that, that would be on their own case and situation.
Yeah, like Gretchen said, the ordinance would still facilitate that as a permitted use, but in terms of the actual site design, now the ordinance would be drafted to facilitate the bank. So if that subsequent user needed to request further revisions to the ordinance or needed to go back to public hearing, that's something we would help them determine if and when that person appeared.
All right, and my other question was, so the quick trip, the quick trip just have 100% of the allowable parking or did they have 120%?
I don't think we have that information handy. We could find out. I would suspect that they were, C-stores with gas pumps typically tend to be a little overparked because of just the turnover. What I would also say is this development predates that provision in the zoning ordinance. It's only been since 2015 that we had that excess parking limitation. So I'm not sure what mechanism would have existed before in 1996, the late 90s to review that. But I would suspect that by today's requirement, the quick trip probably had more parking than what was required based on the size of the building.
Got it.
That's speculation.
Got it. Thank you.
I think, any other questions? And with that being said, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes? Ayes have it. Thank you very much. And moving on to our site plan. We have PC 10 and 11-24 The Groves at Grants Trail.
PC 10 and 11-24 The Grove at Grants Trail LLC was a request for a change of zoning from M1 and FPM1 to R4 and FPR4 in a PEU procedure in the R4 and FPR4 to develop single-family homes on a 35.2 acre tract located on the northwest side of Interstate 55 at the southwestern terminus of Spokane Drive. As the commission will recall from public hearing, this site is located in South County. And there you can see it outlined in red on the aerial. Tonight, we're bringing the plant, the site development plan for your approval. So this is the title page showing the location and providing the site information. This is the overall site development plan showing the total development.
This is zoomed in on the northwestern portion of the site. This is zoomed in on the northeastern portion of the site where you see the connection with Spokane Drive and Mulally Drive.
Oh, Abby, while you're going through it, ultimately, does that, does Mulally, is there full access or is there ultimately a gate proposed at that?
It says that that access shall be gated, emergency access only.
And so for the commission, what occurred after the recommendation came out of this group is that at the council level, there was the addition of the requirement that this access be emergency egress only. So that's why it has a gate now.
And that's, that's the street that, I'm sorry, I'm interrupting. That's the street that's the closest to 55 and Rebus Barracks, right?
First, there's Spokane, which is the more southern street you see. I don't know if you can hover your cursor over it, Abby. Yeah, that's Spokane. And then Mulally is just above it, and that one has a gate.
Does anyone, why would the gate be set there because that street was narrow?
The council put that in as part of the response to some of the community's concern about the use of that existing street. So there are the other two connections to stub streets. I believe this one at Spokane goes all the way through. But to reduce the volume of vehicles that may travel on Mulally Drive, he put, they put in that requirement for a gate and for it to be emergency egress only. So that is compliant with the ordinance as passed by council.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I feel like I interrupted staff in telling us about the.
No, that's okay. I started it, so.
My concern goes back to the original conversation that the public had, and that is that Spokane, I believe that Spokane that's closest to the highway, it comes right out by 55 and Rebus Barracks. It's a terrible, terrible traffic situation. And I just can't imagine that we approved it. I don't know. I guess the transportation department looked at it, I'm sure.
Yes, and the other thing that isn't in the ordinance because it's an off-site improvement is that the council and the developer did talk about installing a signalized, a signal at McKenzie and Rebus Barracks where that turn is up there, which would then allow a little more, you know, stop traffic up there and create more space on that, you know, southeast where Rebus Barracks is between McKenzie and 55 to create more opportunity for vehicles to turn left or to, you know, to turn right as needed. So that wouldn't, that wouldn't come before the commission, but that's supposed to be the other partner. You know, that's supposed to be the other half of gating this entrance is then providing that signal up at McKenzie.
So McKenzie and Rebus Barracks just really at the curve, right?
At the curve, right by the, I can't remember, the Islamic Center at the corner or at the curve there.
And that's gonna have a stoplight that then, okay, well, I mean.
I can't promise that that will occur, but that was the concession that went with this improvement.
How do we, how do we call it a concession if we can't really say it's gonna happen?
Well, Abby, I don't, I can't remember. Did TPW confirm that that was going to happen?
I'd have to check back into Peter's notes about this. Those conversations took place prior to my involvement in this review. I could check on those, though.
We could look, we could provide a little bit more information on that if the commission would like before taking a vote on this site development plan.
You know, this is a tough one because the Spokane road goes through the subdivision. It's narrow. It wasn't designed for like cars to be parked on both sides and two lanes of traffic. I think that's what the, if I remember from the public, that was their concern. So they don't want the traffic going through the subdivision, but then the road, the other road, I guess that's having a hard time keeping them straight, Spokane. That, to me, that seems like it's so close to the highway, but I can understand if there's gonna be something that starts and stops the traffic and gives people a chance to get in and out of the subdivision without, you know, taking it, taking into account all the, all the traffic and trying to help that. I can, I can understand how that would approve it.
So Abby, why don't you keep going, but then if the commission decides that they want to hold this, that is always an option.
Okay.
Let me make a comment on the traffic on that Spokane. I would just hope that the county and the state would get together where that road comes out that Spokane and would have, and put on there no left turn. Because if everybody was going right out of there, you're not gonna have a traffic jam. I mean, right now, that's, that's pretty congested right there. You come, there's, there's a exit ramp that comes off 55 and goes up, up Rebus. And then there's a median that's right past that, so. I'm sure they're probably looking in, I would hope so, and just make that a right out only for that. Right in and right, right out on that Spokane. That would help.
Keith, I will also, oh, go ahead, Ms. Hancock.
That makes a lot of sense, but they're saying that the second road is gonna be blocked. So how will people turn left coming out?
Well, they'll have to go the other way. It won't, you know, this isn't, there's another, can you go back on the map there and show the whole neighborhood? Or make it smaller?
So they'll have to go out the apartment?
Yes.
And?
Yes.
On the nor, I guess that's. Yeah.
Where that light is that they're talking about, that's where that would push them out at.
That's pretty far for people that are all the way down at that far cul-de-sac to have to go. But if they're gonna turn left, they're heading in that direction anyway.
What I would just remind the commission is that the question before you tonight is, does this site development plan meet the PEU ordinance requirements?
And what would those be now? What is, what is that focused on?
That is things like the lot size and the access and the landscaping requirements. But things like, like not turning left at Spokane does not exist in the ordinance and.
I would just put a comment out there, Mel, so we can move on.
Oh, I understand.
Move on with the, with the presentation, please.
This is looking at the southern portion of the subdivision where they have the connection to Grants Trail. This is the overall landscaping plan, which we find meets the requirements of the PEU ordinance. And this is zoomed in showing those individual lot trees and subdivision in the common ground area. And again, zoomed in toward the southern portion of the site, showing the buffer yard along Interstate 55 and then the lot trees on the individual lots. And so the Department of Planning is recommending approval of this site development plan. And at this time, I would like to request a motion.
Okay, you've heard the recommendation of the staff for approval. Do I have a motion for approval?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second? Was that a second, Chris?
Second.
Yes.
Okay. Now, do we have any questions? Any more questions?
So will you say again what it is we're approving? And then what other processes are there that would have to be approved before this could go forward?
Sure. So in terms of Ms. Williams' earlier question, this request came before the commission for public hearing and executive meeting. I can't remember if it was late 2023 or early 2024. So they came before the planning commission and made their request. The department recommended approval. The commission recommended approval to the council, who passed an ordinance with a couple of additional items pertaining to road access. The Department of Planning then reviewed the entire site development plan, the lot layout itself, the landscaping plan, the connections to Grants Trail, et cetera, to ensure that it met all of the requirements of that ordinance. We found that it did, so we brought it to the commission today for its decision. After a site development plan is approved, any development, anytime a site development plan is reviewed, is approved, the developer then submits what are called improvement plans to the Department of Transportation. That's where they basically show everything below the site development plan. How are they going to grade the site? How are they going to build the roads? The actual roads themselves? Where would the stormwater infrastructure and the sanitary sewer infrastructure go? All of that will be reviewed after this plan is approved. And then they will also be able to go and pull permits from the Department of Public Works. So there will also be staff review of, you know, every, every house that's constructed, every basin that's constructed, et cetera. MoDOT would also have a prelim, would have a review of anything that triggers, like any of the work that interferes, excuse me, not necessarily interferes, but interplays with Spokane Drive. MoDOT would be able to do their review there. MSD would also be doing their formal review after the site development plan is approved.
And then if they, if they approve it, then it's approved and it goes to the, and we're, we're good, we're implementing, right?
Right. Right, then they'd, they'd pull permits.
Okay.
Okay, any more questions? If not, uh, we have first and second, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Nays? Eyes have it.
I abstain from voting, this is our veto, I abstain.
Okay, you abstained, favorite?
Yes.
Thank you, so we, we have approval of five, five yes and one a abstentia.
Okay, we don't have any for the good of the order tonight, um, so, at this time, you could request a motion for adjournment.
Keith, I, I would like to bring something up.
Well, right ahead, Sammy, thank you.
Okay, um, we had the, we approved the minutes of the nominating committee, but I don't think that the recommendations of the nominating committee have ever been voted on, and I was wondering what the process would be for that.
Were we going to do that at this meeting, it wasn't on the agenda?
I was thinking about that, we can add to the executive session after the public hearing, uh, an item for the report of the committee, so then the commission could take action on that report, and that would install that officer, so, take a note, and we'll add the report of the nominating committee to that executive session.
Okay.
Thank you.
Will, will that work for you, Sandy?
Absolutely.
Okay.
So, on that note, we'll see you a week, uh, basically exactly a week, at ten till seven, on Monday the twelfth.
Yep, I have a question about the agenda for next week's meeting.
Mm-hmm.
Is the Alex David matter coming before us this time again?
Yes, we re-advertised it.
Okay, I need to recuse myself from, from that matter.
Will you say that again?
I need to recuse myself from that matter, and, um, it kinda surprised me last time, but it didn't end up happening, cause he didn't.
Cause he didn't, right, okay, so then, basically after the commission hears PC fourteen twenty-five, you'll just need to, you'll step out of the chamber, um, and then we'll bring you back.
Okay.
And we have spoken with the petitioner, um, there was just a error on their end, and they will be there, uh, this time.
Okay, well, I'd like to move for adjournment, uh, do I have a motion?
Motion to adjourn?
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Nays? Eyes have it, and we are adjourned, and we'll see you five, twelve, twenty-five at six forty-five in the chambers.
All right, thanks everyone.
Thank you.
Mel, can I give you a call, please?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.